And join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are to the approval of the agenda. Mr. Patruchy, do you have a amendment for me?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda under number 5A. Unfortunately, we will not be having a presentation from KITA tonight, but we have Brian McConaughey and his son Adam here representing Puget Sound Electric for our little presentation, PSE.
So is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to amend the agenda, to remove the KITA presentation and to add Brian McConaughey and his son from Puget Sound Energy to the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the reason Mr. Powers isn't here this evening is his wife is terminally ill, so if we could put him in our thoughts and prayers, she probably isn't going to make it till the end of the year, so John's going to come see us in January, February timeframe, so. We are to our first citizen comment period for items on the agenda.
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Oh, why not? Are there any other amendments to the agenda before we approve it? Okay, we're going to vote on the approval of the agenda, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda...
I would be glad to make that motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm jumping all over the place. All right. Somebody, Fred seconded it, we'd like to vote again, now we have a motion and a second, so we'll follow some Robert's rule.
Rob needs a mulligan.
I need a mulligan. So we have a motion to approve the agenda by Councilmember Ashby, seconded by Councilmember Chang, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are you happy now, Brandy?
Happy.
All right, wonderful. Now we'll jump into citizens' comments for any items on the agenda. Does anyone wish to comment? We do have a public hearing on another matter, and there'll be opportunity to testify on that at that time. So seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. We have one item on the consent agenda, all in favor, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I would like to...
Does it have to be on what's on the agenda tonight?
At this point, there's another citizen's comment period later in the meeting.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Second.
And Councilmember Donlin, second, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Mr. McConaughey, you have a presentation for us this evening?
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. My name is Brian McConaughey, and this is actually kind of my swan song for Puget Sound Energy, I'm phasing into a new direction in my life, but at the meeting that Puget Sound Energy had with the City Utility Advisory Committee probably six months ago, I don't remember which council member it was, but somebody hinted that it would be great if Puget Sound Energy helped support the city's efforts on improving your holiday lighting display, and since we are huge advocates of making sure that communities are using more energy-efficient lighting, I would like to present a check in the amount of $1,000 to the City of Port Orchard to help you support your improved and increasing the holiday city lighting. And then the other item I'd like to let you know of is, I'm aware that the city council or the city is doing a food bank drive, and Puget Sound Energy is also, as part of our end-of-the-year contributions to food banks, we are making a $1,000 contribution to the Port Orchard Food Bank as well, so I will hand this check to you, Mayor, and I assume you'll disperse of it correctly.
Absolutely. The treasurer took the evening off, but I'll get it to him. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, any questions for Mr. McConaughey? Maybe we can get a little more next year.
Wow.
Thank you, Brian.
Who's your replacement, Brian?
Okay. We'll move on to our public hearing, which is item 6A, public hearing on an ordinance adopting interim regulations relating to non-conforming uses and structures and procedures. Mr. Bond?
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Department is proposing an ordinance to adopt interim regulations relating to non-conforming uses and structures. Currently, there is no specific process by which a property owner can request a permit from the city determining that an existing use or structure on a property is legally non-conforming. There are a number of reasons why a property owner might require such a determination, i.e., if the property owner is refinancing the property and the bank requires a formal determination of the non-conforming status, if the property owner has submitted permits for alterations of the structure and claims that such alterations are consistent with the non-conforming use or structure, such determinations can be as time-consuming as a permit approval. So the city has proposed that a formal permit procedure with a fee to cover administrative costs be adopted. The Washington courts have held that cities can require a permit as a condition of the continued legality of the non-conforming use or structure, and that was Johnson v. Seattle. An interim ordinance includes a procedure for the submission of a non-conforming permit application, criteria for permit approval, decision, and appeal requirements. The interim ordinance is proposed to be adopted for six months in order to provide city staff adequate time to prepare a more extensive permanent ordinance, which will incorporate regulations for all legal non-conforming uses and structures into one chapter. At the public hearing, the council will receive input and subsequently will consider public comments and make any desired changes to the draft interim ordinance as indicated by a majority of the council. Since the public hearing is being held during a December 20 special meeting, no formal action can be taken at this meeting. It is anticipated that, as directed by council staff, we'll bring a final interim ordinance to the council for adoption at the first meeting of January in 2017. And before you move on to the public hearing, I just want to emphasize that the process that we're proposing here is an optional process, except when there's a code enforcement action or when somebody's actually seeking a permit to change a non-conforming use or structure. And so we're trying to create an opportunity somewhere in between having to make a decision on something like a building permit and having somebody have to go directly to court to seek such a determination. And so with that said, if you have any questions, I'm happy, well, I guess, we're not doing questions tonight, we're only doing the public hearing, so I recommend you open the public hearing.
We've opened the public hearing, and I just reiterate, we're not taking any action on this this evening, we are just taking testimony, and I think the council will, I've had a couple of you reach out to me today with questions, concerns about this, and so we'll have some deliberations on it and then bring it back in January. So at this point, I'll open up the public hearing, and I've got Teresa Osinski from Kitsap Builders Association is first signed up.
Good evening, council, I'm Teresa Osinski, I'm the Executive Vice President of the Kitsap Building Association, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Just in general terms, I just want to emphasize again that I'm continuing to be dissatisfied with the city's efforts to pass interim codes rather than the traditional process of code revision, which is to announce that you plan to change a code, create a process for people to become a part of that process, take robust public comment about that, and then move forward. This city has adopted a practice of declaring things to be an emergency, adopting interim codes, those processes put in place code that then puts the citizenry in the position of having to prove to you and your staff that what you've adopted in the interim is incorrect, and it's really an upside-down way, and it's not good public process, and I'm sorry, but it's poor governance. There's nothing about this ordinance that's an emergency, not a single thing, and this is the same testimony I gave you over a year ago about codes that you still have not actually formalized, that you've had an ongoing interim process review for. This is very poor government, and I'm really sorry to see this council doing this again. There's nothing about what you're asking to be done that needs to be done in an interim or emergency basis. In addition to that, I would like to point out that what has been proposed is really unnecessary. If it is true that the city feels burdened by code enforcement issues that place you in an awkward position with somebody who's in violation of your codes and your staff are trying to take them to task on that, and you need a process for that structure or that use to be brought into conformance, that's a different issue. If you're truly concerned about the citizen who's having some issue with their lender, then simply write a letter to the lender. That's what Kitsap County does. If there's an issue about whether or not a structure or use will continue to be allowed in the city, you just write a letter. They don't need to go through an unlimited review, by the way, this code places no obligation on the city to make a decision in any timeframe. So this could go on for who knows how long. So if your genuine concern is to help somebody who's up against a wall with their lender, at a minimum, I would think you would want to put a requirement of a deadline on that. But the truth is, you don't need to do it at all, just write a letter that says, "We've looked at this, they're good to go." So I could go on and on, but unfortunately, this process will likely go on and on, and I'll have other opportunities to comment on it. I would really urge you to stop this practice, hold your staff accountable, allow the public to be a part of your processes, and let's get some genuine citizen input and legitimate process in place so that folks can be a part and at the table for these discussions, rather than putting the citizens in the position of having to prove that your staff is wrong, and having things already in code is a lot harder to get it out later. That concludes my testimony, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have Bill Palmer, he's next on the list.
My name is William M. Palmer, here representing the Kitsap Alliance of Property Owners Organization, and I want to second the comments that Teresa just made. I looked at this ordinance, I reviewed an earlier draft, but not on December 20, 2016, because the, there's no emergency. Your staff report identifies no emergency. You're adopting an interim ordinance as if there was an emergency, and you've not proven that there is. I had serious questions a year ago, August, as to whether or not you had an emergency back then when you adopted a subdivision code, later held a public hearing, and one thing that Teresa didn't mention is that that interim subdivision code expired and then was reinstated in January or February of this year, and it goes on and on and on. We had, this particular ordinance came up by the review, to the review committee in July and August. Comments were submitted, I submitted some oral comments based on my review at that time, that what was presented to the committee was different than what you've got before you tonight. As far as I can tell, there's been no process through the planning commission, even the committee didn't sign off on it, not that we have a sign-off, per se, but there was no indication to the committee that this was going to go forward to the council as an interim ordinance. So I have real serious questions about how the city is proceeding with their process, and I absolutely agree with Teresa, there is absolutely no need for this ordinance, interim or permanent. City just simply writes a letter, says, expresses an opinion, if I am applying for a permit and I'm expanding a non-conforming use and the city says, "No, you're not," then we argue that before the hearing examiner, and a determination is made as to who's correct. That's the way it has worked in the past, that's the way it ought to work, and if there's a lending institution that has question mark as to the legal standing of a particular business, use, or structure, the city can write their opinion and the property owner can write a counter-opinion or go through some sort of a legal process. This is particularly egregious, in my estimation, as representative of the Kitsap Alliance of Property Owners, is you're forcing the burden on the property owner or business owner to prove that he has a legitimate right to be there, rather than the contrary position where it's up to the city to determine whether he's not entitled to be there or not. And that burden of proof shift is one of the reasons why we're considered innocent until proven guilty, so it's constitutional issue as far as I'm concerned, I have problems with that on that basis.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Brown? No? Mr. Eliasen?
Getting too close to Christmas, I need to be nicer to Mr. Brown. Mike Eliasen, Kitsap County Association of Realtors, I'd like to follow Teresa, I told her tonight, I said, "You're going to be eloquent tonight, just say what needs to be said, and then I can just say I agree with Teresa, and I can go sit down and be quiet." Anyway, we believe there's other administrative remedies available to you, we're sure that you may, the city administrative, you may feel you have just cost to implement it, but we think there may be some unintended consequences as a result of it, but I would like to have some opportunity between now and the next public hearing to provide to you the Washington Administrative Code, because for cities that don't have in their codes definitions of non-conforming, you already have a, I'll call it a network, but you have backup to address some of your issues. But again, I think we might have some opportunities to talk about other administrative remedies rather than having an application and a permitting process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Anybody else that wishes to testify on this, this public hearing? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Got a few comments out there from the council members that would, Councilmember Ashby, Dina, either one of you want to start?
You want to go?
Sure, I can go. I had concerns about Section 6, it's on page five, and basically it says that because this procedure is exempt from this, from the RCW, there's no deadline for the city's issuance of the director's decision, and I felt that there should be a timeline, and had some discussions with Nick earlier about it, but wanted to bring it before council.
So you'd like to see a timeline put...
I would like to see a timeline put into the process.
And other questions, concerns? Councilmember Dina?
So I also have some concerns about the need for this, but I think we'll talk about that more, but also structurally, if you look at Section 4 on page three, Criteria F, it calls out for information demonstrating that, and then there's three criteria shown, but just before the third criteria is the word "and," which means that all three criteria need to be demonstrated, when you may have a use or a structure, but not both. I also have concerns about requiring a SEPA checklist, so for example, if I have a structure that was built in the 80s, I certainly shouldn't be required to go through a SEPA process where mitigation might be required for that.
And which that is item J.
That's, sorry, that's item J. On page four, under A2, it referenced a structure or use that has been in existence and maintained continuously with no interruption, however, our current code allows for a six-month interruption or interruptions of 18 months, up to 18 months in a three-year period. And so that, that uninterrupted, if you will, is also referenced in C at the bottom of the page, of page four. Circling back to A2, it talks about former or current city codes, using former or current city codes, and, you know, I don't even know if we have some of our former codes, say, from the 70s or the 80s, so I question whether there's really value in that. Again, in B right below, there's also reference to uninterrupted or continuous use, and then that's, that's all that I have now, but I'm looking for more discussion on the value of this.
Lawson?
I would just echo Scott's comments, I'm still wondering what the need is in reading this, and if we're going to go through a process to develop something to replace this, why do we need this now? So, my question, need.
Other comments or questions?
I agree.
Mr. Bond, you want to address the need, or we want to, and why your department feels this is necessary?
Yeah, so number one, right now, I don't, you know, we heard testimony that said, "Just send a letter," to that effect, but I don't know that that authority exists in the code for me just to issue a determination on this that's not attached to another decision type, and so council would have to explicitly provide that authority for me to make that determination, and that's what this chapter attempts to do, and again, it is optional, except when you're seeking a permit or when you're seeking to be relieved from code enforcement actions against you. I think the other discussion, and I want to emphasize that we did talk about this at our Development Regulations Committee, and this language is mostly the same as what went to that committee, and we've shortened it to just take the procedural portions of it, about this is the type of permit, and these are the criteria, and this is how you receive this determination. But I would like to remind council that the purpose of the non-conforming use chapter is to basically protect existing uses so long as they're maintained, however, the zoning code envisions that non-conforming uses over time are supposed to disappear. This chapter isn't meant to preserve something in perpetuity or to allow it to expand. If you want something to be preserved in perpetuity or to expand, the property should be zoned for that particular use. And so when you think about a commercial business that's maybe in a residential zone that has been there for 50 years, if you don't want that to change to residential, then it shouldn't be zoned residential, it should be zoned commercial. And so I think that the non-conforming use chapter in the past has had a lot of exceptions to it because the property hasn't been zoned as carefully as it probably should have been, and so there is an opportunity for somebody who's in this situation to seek a rezone, to have their property designated to a zone that is appropriate to where they're at today, rather than having to continually be non-conforming. I think there's also taxation implications with this, and for instance, if you have a commercial business in a residential zone that's non-conforming, you're assessed based on the fact that you're a single-family property, but that, you know, you have a commercial business there now, which is less than if you were a commercial property, and so potentially, if you're allowing somebody to expand their non-conforming use in a residential zone that's a commercial business, you're basically just giving them a tax break long-term, and so I think that we really need to take a 10,000-foot view of this and look at what our current zoning is and where these non-conformities exist, and if the zoning's not right, we should fix the zoning rather than relying on all these sort of exceptions to the rule that are in the non-conforming use chapter.
Mr. Clausen?
In the process to fix the zoning, what does that require if it's not identified in the comp plan? You have to go through a comp plan amendment before you can attach the zoning?
It depends, if you, if you're jumping from one single-family zone to another that's within the same comp plan designation, it's a rezone. If you're jumping from commercial to residential, or residential to industrial, or something that requires a comp plan change, then it would be a comprehensive plan amendment that has to be initiated. So it really depends on how subtle the change is versus being a radical change from one, you know, overarching category to another.
Using your example, a commercial business in a residential zone, how long would it take to get that process rectified by going through a rezone?
So the, if it's a rezone where you're changing just the zoning without a comp plan amendment, it's relatively short, it's potentially 60 or 90 days. If you're talking about a comprehensive plan amendment, it all depends on what time of year they submit their application, because we have one comp plan cycle per year, and if the timing is right, it could be six months, if the timing is wrong, it could be over a year.
So in the case of a residential, and if it's identified as residential on the comp plan, but it has been a non-conforming commercial, it could take up to a year for a comp plan adjustment, and then another 90 days for a rezone.
Well, no, the rezone and the comp plan would be simultaneous.
Would be simultaneous, up to a year.
Yeah, but, you know, the example that came up in our committee is that there's an auto repair place on Sydney near Lippard that's been there for a long time, as I understand it, and it's zoned residential, and so if the comp plan and the zoning is to be believed, it's because the council intends that, for that to cease to be commercial at some point in the future, and if that's not the case, maybe that's something that the council wants to initiate, changing from residential to commercial in the comp plan and on the zoning map, and that's something that council can initiate or the landowner can initiate, but in this case, this, this process is really here to, to provide an administrative remedy for somebody who's seeking to preserve their non-conforming use, and if we're really, if it's really our objective to steer them in the direction of our comp plan and our zoning, the burden is on them to remain rather than being on the city to demonstrate that our, you know, our planning is incorrect. Our desired outcome is incorrect.
That's exactly what this is. So, Mr. Bond, how many anomalies like that automotive repair shop exist out there, and should we be addressing that through a comprehensive plan amendment?
Twice since I've been here, we have done outreach to property owners that we said, "Hey, look, you have a major issue because you're a cluster of single-family homes, you're zoned commercial, you can't expand your use, you can't, you know, you can't do a whole lot of things to your property, are you sure you wouldn't like, wouldn't rather have residential zoning?" And so off of Salmonberry, near, to the east of Bethel, we did that, and off of Sydney, south of the Albertsons, there's a bunch of properties back there that are commercial that we reached out to those folks and said, "Hey, you know, you don't have sewer, you don't have water, you're zoned commercial." We had at least one guy come in wanting to expand his residence who couldn't because he's zoned commercial, and so we said, "Look, this whole area, it doesn't make sense to be zoned commercial." We reached out people, and everybody said, "Nope, we want to be commercial, it's more valuable," but then they have problems when they come in and they want to actually expand their existing residential use, and so that's a limitation of our zoning, is that we're setting a policy that says this area is to develop as commercial, but between now and when there's demand for that property, people are sort of stuck.
Mr. Clausen?
If this was in existence when that person came in and wanted to expand a residential, would this change allow that?
No, this ordinance, I guess, the reason that I brought up that discussion is to really emphasize the intent of zoning and comprehensive planning was that we're setting a long-term, you know, we're trying to influence change of land use in the city long-term. In the way that our existing code is set up, it's having the effect of preventing change by ensuring that existing uses go on forever and can be expanded, and so this is, this is trying to, I guess, it shifts the burden to somebody who's seeking to stay the way that they are when there's a question as to whether that is or is not a legal non-conforming use.
I think a better example is Mr. Donlin, you know, hypothetically, Mr. Donlin has an old home that he's got four residential, or four dwellings in it, units in it, he believes in it, and the city says, "No, you don't, you've got a single-family dwelling." And he's, he believes he has what he has, and city says, "No, you don't," and we want, we're wanting a process for Mr. Donlin to prove his case, I guess, is what we're trying to accomplish with this. Mr. Dina?
So, you know, one traditional avenue is to, for the director or whoever to take a look at the preponderance of the evidence that must be demonstrated by Clancy, and to look at sending out a letter, and so I'd like to hear a little bit more about your concerns about the authority to send out that letter.
Well, so, as far as I know, there's no explicit authority to make... Well, so, as far as I know, there's no explicit authority to make a determination one way or another. The code establishes what nonconforming uses are and how they can be expanded or maintained, but it doesn't, it doesn't provide me the authority to make a determination on that, or it doesn't provide it to the hearing examiner, it doesn't provide it to anyone. It just states what a nonconforming use is. As part of a building permit, we have to determine that issuance of that building permit is consistent with the zoning. And so, at that time, we can make a determination with regard to zoning. But outside of attaching a determination for a nonconforming use to another permit, there's nothing explicit in our code that gives us the ability to issue that. And I'll say that that was the case until we adopted our interim permit processing code. The interim permit processing code does include a provision for administrative interpretations, but it really emphasizes code. And so, it says, "When there are two or more possible interpretations of code, the director can make a determination upon application by somebody who seeks to have that clarified." And so, we figured that there's enough authority there that I can issue a decision, but there aren't any criteria for determining when I do and when I don't issue a letter saying that you are or are not a legal nonconforming use. And so, what this does is this establishes criteria and says, "You need to provide two forms of evidence, and upon seeing those forms of evidence, you know, that will be evaluated and we'll issue a decision." Right now, I don't have a whole lot of guidance on how to make that determination, because it's not in our code. There are no criteria in our code for making that determination.
So, then, it is another avenue, perhaps, to make sure that code allows you to make that determination, rather than create a process.
Well, if code allows me to make the determination, that's fine, but I have to have some criteria. So, without criteria, you know, it's, I think that a director can take things, and one director might come to one conclusion, and another might come to another conclusion, because there's nothing to measure a request against. I think the other, the other issue with the administrative interpretation is that in terms of it being an administrative remedy, I don't think it rises to the level that it constitutes an administrative remedy. So, if somebody wants to challenge you, they could bypass that as an option that's available to them.
Your thought, Mr. Clausen.
Well, and then I had a follow-on question. I would encourage us to look at another less intrusive method, number one. Number two, when we were talking about these other rezones earlier, moments ago, would those have been spot zones had they been granted? Or would they have been adjoining current or similar zones had they been approved?
I think as long as it's consistent with your comprehensive plan, spot zoning is generally a non-issue when planning under GMA. So, I don't think that's necessarily a problem, though your code should establish a minimum area for, a minimum zoning area that says that you have to have at least a half an acre in order to zone a piece as commercial.
Right. I guess where I was heading is in the example of an area being rezoned, let's say, a residential area with a gas station in the middle of it. Clearly, the intent is that should that use ever stop for more than six months, or for more than 18 months in a three-year period, that use would go away. And so, I think when you're looking at the intent of the zoning and the comprehensive plan, I think that supersedes perhaps the idea that you then create a commercial zone for that. That's the will of the comp plan, really. So, I just wanted to follow up on that.
Mr. Clausen, did you have a comment?
This ordinance, as I read it, is envisioned to provide us six months' worth of coverage. What is anticipated to happen at the end of six months? What do you see happen?
Well, and as we mentioned, this has already been studied quite a bit by the Development Regulation Committee, and there's a joint work-study meeting planned for January between the Planning Commission and Council to go over the codes that we've put together to this point with that committee, to introduce it to you and walk you through the proposal. And so, at least, our interim regulations expire in February, and so, we are planning on bringing permanent regulations for adoption to the February meeting for council approval, with a hearing prior to that at the Planning Commission, and a work-study prior to that at the Planning Commission. And so, all of those things are in the works, including this nonconforming use chapter, which would be a part of that package going forward. So, presumably, this is in place as an interim ordinance for, you know, two months. I guess by January, it'll be more like a month.
So, is it worth wasting the ink on something that's going to be needed for a month? I mean, how long have we've gone without?
I think there is a pending need for this that creates some urgency, and I don't want to get into the details of that in open session.
Somehow, I need to understand what the urgency is before I can support something like this.
John, I think this goes back to the executive session we had last week, and maybe, you know, if we wanted to take a quick break and revisit that.
I think that would be helpful.
That would be helpful, that we could go back and have that exact dialogue to determine emergency versus, you know, one-month interim, which none of us were in favor of a week ago. That's why we're here tonight, talking about this, and deferred having any type of vote on this until we could get more input, because it took all of us by, a little, by surprise. And I think there's a lot of due diligence that this council needs to do.
We want to have a, how long do we need? 10-minute executive session? Okay. And the nature of that is? Can you, want to? Pending litigation? Okay. So, 10 minutes? In session? And so, are there any more questions about this subject matter? Nick any more direction on what he's going to bring back? And we're going to continue our dialogue on this on January 7th, I believe. You have the direction you need, Mr. Bond?
Yes.
And you captured all of Mr. Dean's. Am I off? January?
I think it's at 10.
10? Okay. First council meeting in January, we'll continue our dialogue on this. All right, we are on to our first business item, which is 7A, Adoption of a Resolution Confirming Mayoral Appointments to Boards and Commissions. Clerk Ryan Anderson.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council. So, annually, the city clerk reviews the expiring terms or vacancies of members of various boards and commissions. The mayor recommends appointment of the following persons to boards and commissions: Suzanne Martin Smith to the Planning Commission for a term expiring December 31, 2020; reappointment of Stephanie Bailey for a term expiring December 31, 2020; and the reappointment of Annette Stewart for a term expiring December 31, 2020; reappointment of Ken Cambich to the Civil Service Commission for a term expiring December 31, 2022; for Dr. David Bernstein for a term expiring December 31, 2019, to the Design Review Board; and reappointment of John Pervs for a term expiring December 31, 2019. And lastly, for David Fall to the Building Boards of Appeals for a term expiring December 31, 2021. Mayor Patanzu recommends adoption of resolution confirming his appointments as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution confirming the mayor's appointments to the boards and commissions as set forth in the resolution presented.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion of this matter? Seeing none, all in favor of confirming the appointments of the mayor's appointments to boards and commissions as set forth in this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to item number 7B, Adoption of a Resolution Setting Forth Port Orchard Standards for Conduct and Written Procedures in accordance with State of, with the Code of Federal Regulations. Mr. Dorsey, I understand you're filling in for the Treasurer, Martin here, tonight on this one.
I certainly am. Go Huskies. Is an active participant in federal grant applications, and when successful, receives federal grant proceeds for transportation, law enforcement, water, sewer, and storm drainage utilities, and other worthwhile public benefits. As a recipient of federal funds, the city is obligated to certain rules, regulations, and codes. The Code of Federal Regulations, or CFR, is the codification of the general and permanent rules published in the Federal Register by the department and agencies, by the departments and agencies of the federal government. One such rule, Title II, Grants and Agreements, 200.318, General Procurement Standards, requires that a non-federal entity, a local government like Port Orchard, must use its own documented procurement procedures which reflect applicable state, local, and tribal laws and regulations, provided that the procurement's conform to applicable federal law and the standards outlined in 200.318. This resolution sets forth Port Orchard Standards of Conduct and Written Procedures in accordance with the Code of Federal Regulations. Standards of Conduct and Policy cover conflicts of interest for employees and agents engaged in the selection, award, and administration of contracts. The standard of conduct must contain the following elements: The officers, employees, and agents may not participate in the selection, award, or administration of a contract supported by a federal ward if they have a real or apparent conflict of interest. The officers, employees, and agents may neither solicit nor accept gratuities, favors, or any, anything of monetary value from contractors or parties to subcontracts. But grantees may set standards for situations in which the financial interest is not substantial, or the gift is an unsolicited item of nominal value, and must include disciplinary actions for violations of such standards. The written procurement policies and procedures are required to reflect applicable state and local laws, so long as the procurement procedures conform with applicable federal standards. For example, if state or local rules are more restrictive than federal, the more restrictive will suffice. If state or local laws do not conform with federal rules, the policies need to outline when the federal rules are applicable and describe the methods to be used that are in accordance with federal stands. These rules will be reviewed over the first 90 days of 2017 to assure their applicability to the city and to align business practices with the requirements as outlined in 200.318. Any changes to the standards of conduct or written procedures will be recognized by Passage of a resolution setting forth Port Orchard Standards of Conduct and Written Procedures in accordance with the Code of Federal Regulations is recommended.
Councilmember Chardy.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution setting forth Port Orchard Standards of Conduct and Written Procedures in accordance with the Code of Federal Regulations.
Second.
Dean.
Standards for defining what a financial interest is, and whether it's substantial or of a nominal value.
We, it was brought to our attention in our entrance conference with the auditors that we need to have these policies and procedures in place, this, these resolution in place. And we know that by the end of the year, and we're beginning of a 90-day window here after the first of the year, to put our actual rules and regulations in place after the fact. But we are required by statute, I understand, to have this in place.
So, we're going to discuss standards?
Yes. We've got 90 days after the first of the year, and this is just to prevent us from having an audit finding, so that we have this resolution on the books.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin could speak to that specifically, but he did point out, and it says right here in the back page, top of the page, that the rules were reviewed over the first 90 days of 2017. And I know Mr. Dorsey's, and Mr. Martin have both talked about that, what those rules entail. Other questions? Motion and second, so we'll be voting on passive resolutions setting forth Port Orchard Standards of Conduct and Written Procedures in accordance with Code of Federal Regulations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to a discussion of the de-camp facility, and tonight is intended as a brief on Change Order Number Five. Since this is a special meeting, we can't take any action on this this evening, and this is the one business item that we'll be voting on on the 27th. So, with that, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you. So, before I read the summary, Public Works Department would like to apologize to the City Council. I know that we requested a month ago or so that we manage this de-camp facility up within the budget authority, instead of having to come back for change orders that went beyond the mayor, or the city, or the Public Works Director's authority. It was our full intent to honor that. I've worked here too long and too hard to gain your trust, to not think that this is a significant issue, and I can assure you that we're resolving what ultimately led to the misunderstanding of where they were at, where we were at, budget-wise. And again, I just wanted to apologize, and we will get some procedures in place to keep this from happening again. So, with that, on August 23, 2016, and given that the change order authority limits established pursuant to Resolution 00615 had already been met, Port Orchard City Council authorized the mayor to sign Change Order Two for $36,894 for the regional de-camp facility, and managed the construction contract up to the budget authority allotted in the storm drainage utility budget for the project. Due to several grant-eligible soft costs, and what I mean by soft costs are Puget Sound energy permits, the water meter installation cost, city permits, these are, and primarily city funds that are still charged against the project and hadn't been tracked properly, that they were not tracked by the Public Works Department, oh, I guess I already said that, permit fees, PSC design fees, cost water meter fees, on-call materials testing, staff time benefits, et cetera, and additional work items authorized by the Department of Ecology and the city to resolve design gaps, including work items found within Change Order Five attached. An overage of the allotted 2016 budget authority of $1,015,000 by $45,671.82 has currently occurred. So, speaking to the funding, remember that this is 75% grant funding, 25% city funding. There is funding within the storm drainage facility to cover this, but with that, we also want to acknowledge that that isn't, you know, a justification to the end in that, well, you know, there's money in there, it's not a big deal, because if we have, you know, we need to resolve this on a much larger project where we potentially wouldn't have funding, but this just can't happen. So, with that, staff recommends that at the December 27, 2016 City Council meeting, the City Council authorize the mayor to execute Change Order Number Five with JMG Constructors LLC in the amount of $35,213.95, with the required funding provided by the 2016 Storm Drainage Utility Fund.
We won't be making a motion or taking any action, I'm just here to answer questions and brief everyone on this issue here this evening. So, any questions, staff? And as Mr. Dorsey spoke to, after the holidays, and Heidi's back from vacation, Mr. Dorsey and I, and Heidi from the Finance Department are going to sit down and put some procedures in, so that as we're doing projects, they, probably on a monthly basis, the Public Works Department will submit a report to finance to be, so they can monitor what they believe are the expenditures versus what the Finance Department has accounted for, and so that we can not have situations like this, where we haven't captured these soft costs that were really, many of these things were coming back to the city, you know, in other departments, from the Finance Department's staff time, Public Works staff time, the water meter, and so on and so forth. We should have caught these early on.
I would just say, I appreciate and accept your taking responsibility for it, Mark, that's commendable. We do have coming up some very major projects with significant budgets involved, and it is critical that we manage that well. So, whatever policies and procedures- So whatever policies and procedures we need in place to assure that happening in the future, I would be glad to see those come forward.
And that is the intent. Other questions or concerns? Okay, we'll be bringing this back on the twenty-seventh. We are to council committee reports. It might happen if I do the mayor's report quickly first, because the committee reports is fun, we just got a little report from last night. So on, we'd hope to have Mr. Bond's crew moved in, moving in by the end of the year across the street, and when we bought that building, the costs that we brought forward to do that, those improvements, the ADA compliance ramp, the bathroom, and some other modifications within the building, we thought Public Works would be able to do that work, and as we got into it, we realized there's things like the Christmas lights and the tree that go up this time of year and other Public Works projects that were happening, like Tremont, the potholing we're doing out there and so on, for, just took precedence. And we went out to bid once and got no bids. It's a very good market out there for contractors right now, and when we reached out to them, they just weren't interested because of our prevailing wage requirements, our bonding requirements, and we begged another, we went back out to bid and begged a number of contractors to bid it. The high bid we got was almost as much as we paid for the building. So the low bid was about three times what we budgeted. And so we're gonna put this, we, we're sharpening our pencil, we're, there are things that we're just not equipped to do, like build structural walls and things of that nature, but the, the paint bid alone for the interior painting was ten thousand dollars. And so it'll take us a little longer, but I think there's things that we can do, like demolition and painting and laying carpet, and there's things that we need to have a contractor do, so we're gonna sit down and look at those items and bid some specific line items. It'll be a longer process to do it that way, but I believe we can get it closer to the number that we anticipated, so I beg your indulgence on, on that, because it's just gonna take a little longer than we thought.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Have you thought of looking for sponsors?
Would you love to sponsor that? I'd love, I'd love for someone to sponsor it, but...
No, I mean, maybe someone would like to sponsor the bathroom or something.
Well, I, I, you know, this is being aired, so if anyone wants to come forward and sponsor a bathroom, we'll be glad to allow that to happen, so. How about, how about a retreat date? Do we, we're thinking maybe February. Do we wanna do it on a weekday? Do we wanna do it on a Saturday? Last time we did it an entire day, so I think the first step is let's determine that and then maybe pick a date. Is there a preference to a weekday or on a Saturday?
Makes no difference to me.
Some have preferences, don't?
I'd prefer a weekend if we can, so I don't have to take a holiday. However, I will be happy to take a holiday if majority wants to have a weekday.
I'll second that.
Okay. So to prefer a Saturday, it appears?
Yeah, Saturday.
I can go either way.
Okay, so let's go to February Saturdays. We have the fourth, the eleventh. I have something on the twenty-fifth that I'd prefer not to miss, so, fourth, the eleventh, or the eighteenth. Is there a preference to anybody?
I'm out of town on the eighteenth.
So now we're to the fourth and the eleventh.
How about the eleventh? That'll give us a little chance to rebound after reading.
I only want to mention that the fourteenth is the meeting that we've scheduled to bring forward all the development codes, and so you will have heavy reading that weekend potentially, so just putting it out there.
Okay.
Fourteenth Valentine's Day.
Fourteenth's Valentine's Day, you're gonna...
You're gonna kill us?
What?
Romantic.
Showing the love.
Oh.
Is this, is this gonna be a staff, my wife's staffed?
It was last time, yes.
I've got a commitment on the eleventh.
Mark has a commitment on the eleventh.
I'm in Kelso all weekend.
Okay.
About the fourth?
Fourth. It's the fourth word.
Okay, how about the fourth?
Oh, I'm gonna be out of town that weekend, too.
The fourth? Okay.
We have, we have to go.
So there's the Saturdays in February.
Eighteenth.
How about March fourth?
That's why I'm gonna be out.
March the eleventh.
I...
Are you down the way?
I'm, I'm not available that day.
You might just have to pick a day, and maybe not everyone can be there.
Maybe we should do the eve...
How about the, backing up, because the desire was to do it early on, January twenty-eighth, the last Saturday in January?
I'm gonna shahail us.
That's why we have to talk...
I can't do that.
Okay.
Did we do the eighteenth of February yet?
We had someone, someone had a conflict.
Oh, okay.
I'm not available.
And you aren't available.
How about the eighteenth of March?
I'm good with that date.
Okay.
I think.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Looks like we found a date.
Maybe. March eighteenth?
I think I can...
Can you do it, Cindy?
I think so.
I don't think I come back till the nineteenth. I hate to commit...
Can I just, is there another day in January? If there was a twenty-eighth, what about the twenty-first?
No. No. Twenty-fifth, I know I'm available.
The seventh?
I couldn't do it on the twenty-first either, so.
Okay.
Do, how, why don't we look at doodle.com and...
Let's do a doodle poll, there we go.
That's best.
We got a lot of dates.
All right, all right, and I spoke to a couple, if anybody read the gov... Oh, yes, ma'am.
Can I just confirm, so it's for staff, so assuming department directors and legal counsel there as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll do a doodle poll. You and I will sit down tomorrow, you're in the office tomorrow, correct?
Yep.
Okay, you and I will work with some parameters and get doodle poll out, and we'll include some, some Fridays, too, maybe.
Are we, are we going to have it facilitated like we did last year?
I would recommend that.
I like that.
What was that, I'm sorry?
Facilitated. I think Claire did a, a good job, and...
And I believe that the budget that you guys just adopted envisioned the, the...
Yep, okay, perfect. Okay, anybody read the governor's budget? I did and got alarmed because it had twenty-six, two-hundred sixty thousand dollars for B Street pedestrian path, and it got me a little excited since we, I believe we had five hundred thousand and then the three million, and when it was further investigated, we've already expended two-hundred and forty thousand. The governor's budget is the remaining money we have left, so we have nothing to worry about, yeah, at this time on that. So I asked Mr. Martin about the Sunshine Fund and what's in there, and the, the money is in the hundreds, not in the thousands, as I'd hoped, so, but I don't have an exact figure.
Do we have, can we get some kind of an accounting of where it's gone?
Sure.
Thank you.
It is, it's not...
If it's hundreds, it shouldn't be a large report.
Yes. It's, I know everybody contributes two dollars a pay period into it, and Clerk Reinderson, what, what do we typically, it's flowers for somebody if it was ill or... Okay, okay, so, so if you could remind me to get an accounting from, Mr. Martin's out tomorrow, his family member's coming in tonight from out of town. So with that, that's all I have. I just, I asked the question, he says it's in hundreds, and I'll get you the exact balance. That's as far as I got today. So, I'm gonna drop the screen down for, and Cindy, you wanna talk about what we did last night?
Yes. So, council and mayor last night took a tour of the city and looked at all the holiday lights, went to the neighborhoods, we had an amazing driver, right here, Mr. Clausen, he knows the city well, so we were out and about for hours taking a look at all the lights. So, the best business award, drumroll, Kitsap Bank. Yes, Kitsap Bank goes the extra mile, and this year they even put more lights out. Jerry is the name of the person who is putting lights up, and Kitsap Bank allotted some extra funds, and their display, along with the city's display, makes the entryway to this town just amazing. So Kitsap Bank wins that award. The next award was the best business district. Now, we kind of came up with a new category and we kept expanding, because the eight-hundred block of Bay Street, beginning with Wisteria Lane and including all of these businesses moving down towards the theater, minus, I have to say, the bail bondsman who didn't decorate at all, to my knowledge, did, went the extra mile, and it, they were beautiful displays. We, we just, we marveled at how their Christmas decorations made that whole block just glisten. It was sparkling and lovely and very enticing. So they win the best business district award. The best municipal decorators? Go to the City of Port Archer Public Works team.
Shock.
No bias there, but they did an outstanding job, and we want to recognize them. Best neighborhood was the Rockport neighborhood of Siskin Circle. Nearly every house in that whole cul-de-sac had amazing light displays, and we couldn't get over it.
That was the Ridge, not the Rockport.
Yeah, Siskin in the Ridge.
Siskin in the Ridge.
Yes.
I am corrected. I was writing this at night, and I had notes that...
It was dark in the van.
Yeah.
It was very dark. Okay, so it's the Ridge, Siskin Circle in the Ridge. They have won the award before, and they lived up to expectations and actually exceeded them. The best decorated home, first place.
Let's wait, let's give that one last.
Nope.
No, this is different.
This is different, okay.
Yes, this went to four-four-six-two Southwest Siskin Place. They have also won the award before, but they, they just keep doing such an amazing job. They have a sand in the window, this is part of that whole neighborhood, and they did such a great job. The best decorated home honorable mention was the Harris residence on Eagle Crest Place, right?
Yep.
Okay. Their whole place is a, a display that we really couldn't get over, it's amazing. The best I'll-be-home-for-Christmas home was the Wilson home on three-eighty-nine Golden Pond Street. We recognized their home as, as such a welcoming place. And then the best classic Christmas was the Davis residence on Colleen Place Southwest, beautiful traditional wreaths, nice lighting and all, but there was one home, and it was the best sensational Christmas, and you're about to see why. So we will end up...
Want to get the address out for that?
Yes, that, that was seven-zero-zero-nine Colleen Place Southwest.
Seven-zero-six-four.
Oh, yeah.
Seven-zero-six-four.
I'm sorry, seven-zero-six-four, yes.
Colleen Place in McCormick Woods.
Yes.
Phenomenal. All right, I feel bad for the neighbors, though, that have to watch it all night long. With that, we are to our last citizen apartment heads, do you have anything? You wished everybody a Merry Christmas last time, so...
Yeah, Merry Christmas. Unless you've got specific questions.
Same to you.
Thomas is here as well, if you want to ask him about meetings with ecology and health and tribes, and so, he's available.
Was on the agenda in January.
So we'll, we'll jump right into our last citizen's comment period. Nick, you have something, I'm sorry?
I just wanted to let you know I passed out an end-of-the-year report on impact fee collection as required by our code, so if you have any questions, let me know.
Randy? Sharon? Okay. That, or, or, citizen's comment period, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, I didn't say anything earlier. Couple toothrey breathes, I'm running out of steam, headed for eighty, but when we talk about people's property in the city of Port Orchard, we should know a little history. And what Nick was talking about was the building on Sidney that's been in operation since the nineteen-fifties. There's Ken's Auto Body, a fence store, gas station, paint shop, it's been a little everything, and when we start talking about them being non-conforming, I become worried. The two-thousand lots were created approximately in the city of Port Orchard in eighteen-ninety-seven to nineteen-hundred, and now we're all non-conforming. The second thing this evening is that you're behind the curve on traffic. I'm terribly disappointed in the way you repair roads, you're secondary to Kitsap County in your repair work. The other thing is we can no longer get through the intersection of Sedgwick and Sidney, the main drag next to Lowe's to get on the freeway, across the freeway to get up the hill, and across Bethel on Sedgwick. We're now lined up past Les Schwab coming down the hill, so we gotta quit fooling around and start taking this seriously and figuring out how to improve Bethel Road. Everybody that annexed onto Bethel Road because we were told you were gonna spend some money on it, and you had an extra million and a half, the first time around, you spent it on trucks. We went, we expect you to keep your word and start improving Bethel Road, left and right-hand turns, however you can do it, so we can get on and off. You can't expect businesses to survive when businesses can't get people downtown Port Orchard. And I see the guy's ad saying, "Port Orchard's so great, oh, yeah, yeah, it's half-empty again." The only way to improve Port Orchard is to improve Sedgwick and Sidney and Bethel Road. So I'm sick and tired of hearing about you're going to do something sometime, we need to do it now, you're in gridlock, so I recommend the following. First of all, you turn blinker lights on left-hand turns, just like the county has, so that Lowe's people don't have to wait in line and the light doesn't have to change. They're now backed up to the gas station past the Albertson's two entrances. The other thing is, is that you've got seventy-five thousand dollars in trust for Lowe's, if you haven't spent it, and to improve the Lowe's intersection. The turn lane needs to be deeper and moved to the northwest so that the people going on the freeway can turn right. So we need to have simple changes initially, but we need to do them now. I mean, the other day, they were backed up across Sedgwick and Sidney...
Mr. Brown, you can wrap it up here, your time's up.
That's okay. Across Sedgwick and Sidney, past Burger King. So how are we gonna fix this? And I, I need you to address that.
So thank you for your comments, Mr. Brown.
And one other thing before I quit, okay? Every time you make some stupid ordinance, and we get trapped into something, like you go into executive council talking about something that we know nothing about, the last time you went in executive decision, we got an interim code that is so poor that we won't be able to live with. The second thing, that's enough.
Thank you for your comments.
Anybody have any questions about what I said?
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wants to comment this evening? Mr. Eliasen?
Mike Eliasen, Kitsap Realtors, you can blame me, that's what I get for provoking him earlier and not testifying. I think it's important that the council get an accurate reflection of the developers or the stakeholders committee, I can't remember what the official name is, I'm not a member, but I've been, been invited to the table, others have as well, but I've been at meetings, and I appreciate the mayor being there, because I know there was some controversy earlier about behavior, so decorum is return to the meetings, which is very important, and I think we've made progress in areas, but there's been a bunch of challenges. The first is, I've been at meetings when the non-voting members of the committee outnumber the voting members. I've... I've, I've been to a couple of meetings where I think we've had one or two voting members at that meeting. I did not attend the meeting when you discussed the non-conforming uses, but the characterization I've had from people who were there is that there wasn't a thorough discussion with that committee, that it was presented by staff, here's what we're going to do, and the reaction of panelists was, we don't want to do it. It was widespread opposition. So I think it's important, if we're going to characterize that this committee discussed it, that there wasn't approval. And if that's going to be in the case in the future, I think the voter, a majority of the voting members have to be at the meeting, and they should be voting and giving a report. And I don't even remember when you created it. Does the committee report back to the mayor, to the council?
It doesn't, there isn't really a vote. It's, you're providing comment or written comment or verbal comment at the meetings.
Right. And as you know, we've had challenges, too. I've never been a whole, a member of a stakeholder committee or been involved where the group's told, please get us your written testimony a week in advance. It's been challenging for people to do that, and then yet we show up at the meetings and we're handed redlined versions at the meeting because the city attorney got it to you the night before. And I don't mean to pick on them, but this is a two-way street. And again, I think it's just important to realize that if we're going to move forward with this committee, it'd be imperative that you set it up similar to the other cities in the county and have really a thoughtful stakeholders committee. And last comment is, I think Port Orchard does a fabulous job with your lighting in the city. It's probably the best I've seen in Kitsap County, and compliments to the, the city staff and the council for the work you do.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Osensky?
Again, for the record, I'm Teresa Osensky, the executive vice president of the Kitsap Building Association. On this issue of the code development committee, I would just encourage the council to take the time to attend. I think Cindy's attended all of them. I think the mayor's attended a couple. You know, this is really important stuff, and, and I'm not at the table. However, I have attended, and I have several members of my association who are at the table. And one of the things that occurs at that meeting is the stakeholders who are volunteering their time, valuable, billable time. And they're coming and they're spending time at this because they care about the outcome. Yes, they have a vested interest because they're in some level of industry that's affected by this, but they're thinking about their clients and their future clients. So they have, they come to the table with an area of expertise about what people are looking for and how words in codes affect the ability to do things in the future. I would like to think that they're at the table because they want to help you achieve whatever the goal is, but in a manner that actually gets you there without creating unintended consequences. And that's why you want these folks at the table, because they have the technical knowledge. But you really should be there as well, because from my observation, what occurs is the folks spend the time reviewing the documents, they share their concerns and observations, and your staff flatly tells them whether they will or will not do what's been proposed. Flatly. We will or we won't. And if it's not we will or we won't, it's we'll ask legal. So it's we will, we won't, or we'll ask legal. Last time I checked, the policies are made by you. They're not made by the staff. And when you ask people to donate their time to come to a process, you need to, you really owe them the respect that you're going to have a robust discussion and that their thoughts are going to be considered and not just blanketly denied because you have a planning director who says no, or you have an attorney that says no. You know, an attorney's here to give you advice, and you may have a great attorney, but at the end of the day, you're the policymakers. They're simply here to advise you. So I would really ask you to spend the time at that next meeting and have more than just Cindy and possibly the mayor, if he's able to make it, at the table discussing these very technical issues and hearing the donated time and contributions being made by these volunteers. Thank you.
Give your comments. Yes, Ms. Harmon?
Couple of things. The first is, on the retreat, I would request that you make a video of the retreat. You didn't last year, and it's a public meeting, and everybody should have the opportunity to know what you're discussing at that public meeting. So I really think it should be videoed while you're there. And personally, I think it should be here in this building so it could be videoed easily. Another thing that I'm talking about is, I don't know much about this issue that you guys have talked about tonight, but I will say, as somebody who sits on this side of the fence a lot, there seems to be a lot of, when I watch other people come up and make presentations, the attitude that I see from you is nothing like the attitude I see when these people make their presentations, and almost like you want to bend over backwards all the time, but you don't give that same respect to other groups. And another, I had three things, darn it. Well, I guess the other one has gone out of my head, so I'll have to pass on it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any other citizens' comments? Cindy? Are you hearing none?
Mike Eliasen, Kitsap Realtors. I have to refute the previous speaker because I don't think this council's given any deference to us. In fact, I was complaining when you're at executive session that I'm tired of coming down here to have to speak to these issues, because I don't have to be at Paulsboro, Bainbridge, or the county. There's other ways to handle this, but I can tell you, the previous mayor, who the individual supported, used to call out work study meetings. I remember sitting here in this room, face-to-face with the city council. We don't have that anymore. I'd like to have a meeting face-to-face with the entire city council at times, and I don't believe the current administration is giving deference to one group to the exclusion of another.
One last bite at the apple, Jerry.
I was wondering about the stakeholders meeting, which I have never heard about. I know other groups aren't attending a stakeholders meeting for things that they might be interested in. So when do these meetings happen, and who's kind of, are there council people that attend these, or? I have never heard of them.
We've got Development Regulation Committee, and actually, Councilmember Lucarelli regularly attends, and myself, and city attorney, and developer, Mr. Bond, and I.
Do they have a set date?
Not necessarily.
So you personally let them know that they're, that's why they're going to know about that?
Yeah, we're developing code. All right. With that, we'll see most of you next Tuesday, and others, have a happy holiday.